Counsel, if you will come to order, it is 7:00 PM. And we will convene into our Tuesday, May the 28th, regular council meeting. We do have a quorum. If everyone is present, in just a minute, I'll ask you to stand. And we'll be led in invocation by Fire Chief Wade Carroll. And followed by that, we'll be led in pledges to the United States flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Bone. Would you please stand?
Everyone, please play with me. Lord, we just thank you so much for today and the opportunity that you have given us to serve in this great town. And God, I just pray for our leaders that stand before us today, that stand before you today, Lord, that you would give them wisdom to make the right decisions, to look out for this town and the way that it needs to be done, and to look out for the people that work here, Lord. God, we just pray for the first responders that are out and our soldiers that are around, ensuring our freedom on this day, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. May be seated. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes, or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. So I believe we had one person who signed up to speak during citizens' presentation, Veronica. Here, please state your name and your address, and you might want to pull the microphone down towards you.
Veronica Ruon School, One Green Hill Trail. And today, I want to talk about the Indian Creek water line replacement, street improvement, and the sidewalk project. We have lived at One Green Hill Trail for thirty-four and a half years, and the landscape is a mature. So far, we have not experienced any drainage problems there. And we are the residents in this project, having a lower-than-street level driveway in the backyard. And I provide the few photos, so it's going to help to... Providing my talking point and associate with the photos there. And the exhibit one showing the driveway before the construction begin, began. It's a level from left to right, smooth, balanced, and in harmony with the landscape. And exhibit two shows the location of the bump, since we have a lower drive backyard, the driveway has to have a bump coming from the street. And the drainage is located at the end of the driveway on the left side. And exhibit three showing the newly constructed approach and the sidewalk. And exhibit four, it's a view from the house to the street, and showing left side is six inch and right side is nine inch higher than the existing driveway level. Engineer wants us to move, to remove the additional fourteen feet driveway on my property to match the change. And the new driveway, it's going to be crooked, and you can see from the picture, because the new sidewalk is not even when they approached to my driveway, and having a tall bump and the slipper, and a steeper slope, which may scratch the cars. We attended February and October 2018 town hall meeting held by the engineer, and we were not told that there is a change to the driveway until January this year. So we raised our concerns to engineer through town, and we did not get responses back. About two weeks ago, we were told the contractor is going to lay the approach frame, then we can see how it is going to look like. On May 21st, the frame was set. We noticed this significant great change, and we asked for consideration of moving the sidewalk toward the street with drop-down curbs. I have exhibits five, six, and seven showing different kind of design, showing how the curbs is dropping toward the approach area. Concerning the water velocity and the flow directions during heavy rain, the area is only fourteen foot long and twelve foot wide, with six inches rise on the left side and the nine inch rise on the right. And we are really concerned about when it rains comes and when I have flooding issues here. So we are not really happy about the settings. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Veronica. She only brought one copy. Do you have electronic copy of this?
Yes, I do.
Would you send it to the email address of mayor and council, all one word?
Mayor and council.
Mayor and council@trophyclub.org.
Okay, sure.
Or any one of us, and we'll try to get it distributed. Thank you so much. Tommy, do you have a copy of this? If y'all have... Okay. All right. So did we have anybody else, Holly, that signed up after?
No, mayor.
All right. We will now move on to announcements and reports. Item number one. Receive interim town manager Phillips' update and provide input regarding the following: Fourth of July celebration and volunteer appreciation reception. Jonathan?
Good evening, mayor and council. The annual Fourth of July celebration is just around the corner, July 4th, obviously. Celebration begins at 7:15 AM with the Patriot 5K and Fun Run at Byron Nelson High School, followed by the Parade of Patriots at 9:30 AM. And then the evening fireworks and celebration from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at Independence Park East. All the information on the upcoming event can be found on the town's website, and then social media posts will be made to remind everyone of the events. The next item is a volunteer reception. We had previously announced a date in June. However, due to some scheduling conflicts, we're looking at, and have confirmed with the country club, a date of July 25th for the volunteer reception to recognize the boards and commissions, all of our volunteers here with the town. Be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, anybody have any questions of Jonathan? All right. Seeing no one wishing to ask, we'll move on then to item number two. Receive town council liaison's update. Discussion of same. Park and Rec boards, May 20th, 2019 meeting. And Alicia, you are the council liaison.
Our parks update. Harmony Park's new playground, Jagger's Journey, is complete and was opened on this last Saturday, May 25th. And there is going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, June 1st, at 9:30 in the morning at Harmony Park. So I hope you all can attend that and see the new structure that is ADA's accessible. The large shade structure at Harmony Park, as you know, was damaged a couple of weeks ago from that big storm we had, and staff has been working with the contractor, and the fabric will be replaced at no cost to the town, because it is under warranty, so no deductible, no cost to have that replaced. The community pool has undergone a number of repairs, and the shade structures, their fabric has been replaced with blue fabric in order to be consistent with the color with the splash pad. And a new large umbrella was installed on the west side of the competition pool for more shade. Staff has also been in contact with various cities that border Lake Grapevine in order to plan for trail connectivity and combine our efforts to offer the public additional access points for various locations. And the Parks Improvement Subcommittee was formed with Chairman Nymphae, Vice Chair Bone, and Board Member Stout. Our recreation update, all our summer camp sessions are full for the week of July 4th. Registration for the Patriot 5K and Fun Run is open through Saturday, June 29th, and the Parade of Patriots application is open through Friday, June 28th. Staff has also created a sponsorship proposal package for the Fourth of July celebration. Currently, staff has received donations from Luke's Locker, the Academy, and sponsorship commitments from State Farm Insurance and Care Now. Thanks.
Thank you, Alicia. Any questions, counsel? All right. Seeing no one wishing to speak, we will then move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, does anyone wish to remove any of the items three through six?
Do we need to talk about number five? Recent information?
Not really at this point.
Okay.
Motion to approve consent agenda item three, four, five, and six.
Second? So a motion by Mayor Protim Jensen, seconded by Bone. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Regular session, item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing Safety Month and providing an effective date. Councilmember Fleury and Schaffner placed this item on the agenda, and it's proclamation 2019-13. At this time, I'd recognize Councilmember Alicia Fleury to read the motion and make... Read the proclamation and make a motion.
A proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing June 2019 as Safety Awareness Month in Trophy Club and providing an effective date. Whereas during National Safety Month, individuals and organizations participate by making efforts to reduce the leading causes of unintentional injury and death at work, on the road, and in homes and communities. And whereas in 1996, the National Safety Council established June as National Safety Month, aiming to increase awareness of the leading safety and health risks and ultimately decrease the number of unintentional injuries and deaths in the United States. And whereas many experts are concerned that distraction and other forms of school-crossing behavior pose additional risk for students traveling in school zones as more students engage with their smartphones and other media. And whereas the Town of Trophy Club implements important safety measures, including all school zone traffic signs are visible to the public, speed limit signs within school premises, overhead flasher speed limit traffic signs, school crosswalk flashers, and most importantly, enforcing school zone safety rules with school crossing guards. And whereas no matter how prudent these conventional engineering solutions are, they wouldn't be effective without proper application and enforcement of laws. That's why school crossing guards should be stationed in school zones as they help pedestrians and motorists stay safe during high-traffic hours. And whereas Mr. Alvin Peters did not only fulfill this important role, he did so in his kind, caring, gentle manner, with positive actions, infectious smile, and signature heartwarming wave. And in turn, the Town of Trophy Club and its residents, especially students, welcome Mr. Alvin with open arms and open hearts. And whereas Byron Nelson High School, PTSA, joined together with Mr. Alvin Peters' family, the Gordon family, and Tracy Hunter, to ask students, parents, teachers, crossing guards, community organizations, law enforcement, and citizens to work together to stay safe and to pay it forward in Mr. Alvin's spirit of unconditional kindness. And whereas a Mr. Alvin Peters Memorial Senior Scholarship has been created so that his legacy will continue to have a positive impact on our town and our school community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Scenic Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Safety Awareness Month in honor of Mr. Alvin Peters, passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club this 28th day of May 2019. I move to pass as read.
Do I have a second? Second. Seconded by Bone. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. So we have several presentations here and some people to try to introduce. And we're going to break it up into sections because of what's the activities and what's happening. First of all, I want to present the proclamation to Caroline Peters, Mandy Peters, and Matthew Peters. If you would come up to the front for a second, if you would, for me. I'm not going to make you talk unless you just wanted to say something, so you don't have to be afraid of that. But on behalf of the town council and everyone, the citizens of Trophy Club and those people who brought their children to our schools from other cities, who really appreciated the smile and the wave of what we called Mr. Alvin, and I think all the kids referred to him as Mr. Alvin, was quite an addition to our town and helped with everybody feeling good about what was happening and going to school. And sorry about that, but I can't tell you the number of times saw kids having pictures made with him that were posted and how much he enjoyed the kids. And even in the times when his health was not good and it was more difficult to do things, he was still smiling and waving. Was somewhat of a traffic issue from time to time, if you had to try to wave and drive and stay in your lines. So, you know, for a while there, he was up there right outside the roundabout. I went, kind of move him somewhere else, because I can't do the roundabout and wave. So, you know. And everything else that you're doing at the same time. So, on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for sharing your husband, your father, with us during that time. Does anybody want to make a statement? You don't have to, I just...
I would just like to thank everybody for their kind support, and the kids, and the community especially, for everything they've done for Carol and Alvin through the good times and the bad times. We really appreciate it and just love this community to death. And we appreciate everything y'all have done for Alvin and Carol and Mandy. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can take it. Now, we're going to take a picture in just a minute, so...
That's fine, we'll be...
Don't run away. But I have several things to do, and I thought if I do them all, and then we can go take pictures, it maybe will flow a little nicer. We'll see how good we do. So as part of what happened, I think the brainchild of an idea to establish a GoFundMe page was Tracy Hunter. Maybe there were others who... There were surely others that participated. But it really caught on and became a nice thing to do for... To remember Alvin and what he did for our town. The results of that was, in fact, the establishment of a scholarship in conjunction with PTSA. And there was an award of a scholarship last Friday to Audrey Cannon. Audrey, you want to stand up a second so people can see you, our scholarship recipient? Congratulations to you.
So mayor, real quick about Ms. Audrey here. She was specifically chosen for this scholarship due to her heavy, heavy work in community service. And that really stood out to our scholarship committee, because the Mr. Alvin scholarship is quite special, because he was all about community and giving back and paying it forward. And Ms. Audrey Cannon has shown that in her short little time she's been on this earth. She's done quite a lot. And so congratulations, Audrey, for all your hard work in winning the scholarship, and thank you for all the community service that you've done so far.
So one of the things that happened, and to show the spirit of our community, a family stepped up towards the end of activities to award that scholarship, and so the scholarship was able to be doubled because of the generosity of the Gordon family. So on behalf of everyone, thank you very much, Gordon family, for doing that. So thank you very much. So we're going to begin with some pictures over here to my right by the seal of the town and the flags. We're going to first get the Peters family there, and then we're going to ask our scholarship recipient to join them and get a picture, and then we're going to get the entire family of the scholarship participant back there together, and maybe everybody, and the Gordons back there too. So somehow in all of this, Alicia is going to direct you. So I'm just going to go back there and do what she tells me to do. So we're going to present a plaque and the proclamation, and so let's go do that for a minute or two. Thank you. At some point, we walk the PTSA, and people also... I'm sure I forgot somebody. All Peters family, and the Brocklins, and the Rockbeers. And somebody over here. That's kind of firm, shoulder a little bit, so we can get her. Which side are you... What's the good side of this? Oh, okay, I'm with the beers. She has a good side. I don't have a... Sure, are we okay? Which way?
Is it too low for him?
Too loose.
Oh, yeah, I don't...
It's on the left.
It's on this one.
Yeah, I've got mine locked in. I don't rock it.
Oh, there you go.
Everybody get it? They wanted it? Okay, so hold on for that. And then we also have a presentation of...
He stood at Laura Nick's chair.
Well, we have the back for it.
Sit in Nick's chair real quick, and lord, all the way down.
Get a picture with you. Tracy, get in there.
Got to get Lisa full.
Be on council for less than two weeks.
Get a meeting together.
Okay, let's get a picture of that. Smiler, guys. Now. You get them all? Okay. Now, the next is scholarship...
This is on... There's eventually going to be a park at some point, and this is just required to increase the...
Gordon family. Y'all double up here, darling.
Where's the staff?
Double up. Everybody's taller than me. Oh, well, not everybody.
Here? That's not it. I know what page you're talking about, I just wanted to get here. Oh, that's the... Ledger star.
Okay, we ready? There are only forty-five.
It's this one.
Everybody finished? All right, what else do we have? Was that I didn't? Oh, Audrey. Oh, and...
Meeting details? The agenda just opens this. Oh, you were talking about that, Stan. Gotcha.
She hit the agenda.
Okay. So with the Peters family, and then we're going to ask Audrey, PTSA. No, you got to get Audrey's family. We don't have her family. Okay. Audrey's family, come forward. Okay, so we see you're going to go... And so make sure you got to shift that toward...
Reese is calling me.
Tracy, get back in here.
Okay, cool.
Stand right back. Chris. One more, come back. Hit Chris first. Amy. Kristen family, sorry. I know this is a trouble. Chris, can we see you?
That was the time of my life I got to the front row.
It's the one guy.
That's the wrong side. Wait a minute, one more. Everybody wave. Smile.
Congrats, Audrey.
You don't really have to move your hands. All right, thank you so much. Did we get everything you're supposed to get? We tried. Thank you. Thank you so much. All of your family getting it? All right. Well, it's good to celebrate those kinds of events and gather everybody. I appreciate everyone's patience as we try to get all of those photographs done, but appreciate everybody coming. Item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council recognizing June 2nd, 2019, as National Trails Day and providing an effective date. At this time, I'll ask Tony, as the Parker Recs Director, do you want to say something first?
I can, sure.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, council. The proclamation is a great opportunity for our residents, as it will offer various activities such as trail cleanup, day hike, or day hike, trail service project, trail runs, mountain bike rides, and so on. So we are inviting the cities that butt up against Lake Grapevine to participate as well. I believe the city of Grapevine has participated, and I spoke with the Parks and Rec Director for South Lake, and they're looking at something similar as well, so...
All right. Any questions, counsel? Hearing none, I will recognize Eric Jensen to read the proclamation and make a motion.
Proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, recognizing June 2nd, 2019, as National Trails Day and providing an effective date. Whereas interest in outdoor recreational opportunities, including walking, bicycling, hiking, horseback riding, bird watching, and ORV riding, is on the rise with local residents and visitors. And whereas the American Hiking Society launched its first National Trails Day in 1993 to promote the importance of trails and unlock the potential of a national trails system. And whereas trails in the Town of Trophy Club enhances the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the town and county. And whereas National Trails Day is an opportunity to increase public awareness of the Town of Trophy Club's trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreation activities, and promote the importance of a local and national network of trails. And whereas trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and are an important part of the Town of Trophy Club's outdoor recreational resources. And whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in the National Trails Day activities scheduled in the Town of Trophy Club and the region to strengthen their commitment to preserving the natural scenic and recreational qualities of the Town of Trophy Club trails. Therefore, I, Mayor Scenic Sanders, in conjunction with the Town of Trophy Club, Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 2nd, 2019, as National Trails Day, urging our citizens to participate in a National Trails Day event or recreate at a park or trail on National Trails Day, and consider taking a day to enjoy to your favorite trail. I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia, and move by Mayor Protim Jensen. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. At this time, there were a few people, I think, that maybe wanted to speak about this. Is that right? And so Tom Mills, I think, was the first person who signed up. Mr. Mills, if you want to come, state your name and address, and address the council.
Good evening. Tom Mills, 113 Creek Courts Drive. I've been here before, and I've mentioned I've...
I've been here before, and I've mentioned, I've lived in Trophy Club since 1985. I've used Trophy Club Park since 1985. I've done all the paddling you can do, from all the way from Justin to the Grapevine Dam. I've done all the trails in the park. For the last ten years, I've been actively busy maintaining the nature trails in the park. And I won't say I support this proclamation, but I wanted to correct something I saw in the Trophy Club Park website last Wednesday that said the trails are closed and dangerous to use. We discussed this four years ago when the lake was ten feet higher than it is now. And it was concluded between Park and Rec and the Police Department that, yes, the trail, the park is closed to motor vehicles and motorboats. It is never closed to pedestrians and paddlers. And just to further cement that idea, I was out there today mowing for nine miles on nature trails, which equates to four and a half miles of dry nature trails at the lake level we have now. That's more miles in nature trails than a lot of towns have. And this is just our dry ones with the lake plus sixteen feet. So I didn't get my shoes wet, and the mower didn't spin a tire. So all trails do lead to the lakeshore, but there's no more hazard than there ever is out there. And just encourage everybody to go out there and have a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have anybody else sign up to speak, Holly? All right, I don't see anybody. And so we're gonna present this proclamation back here to take a picture. And we invite those people who are part of the park board and don't know who else you had, Tony, that was coming. The volunteers. Melinda, back there for a picture, and we'll take a picture, present this. Thank you. All right, item number nine, case AP-19-02, Canterbury Hills, Phase 3, Lot 18A-R. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request for approval of an amended plat for Canterbury Hills, Phase 3, Lot 18A-R, Block F, located northeast of the intersection of Sheldon Drive and Abbott Lane. And this is case AP-1902, and Town Planner Payne will address us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to consider approval for an amended plat in Canterbury Hills. The strategic link for this item is infrastructure and development to foster a business-friendly environment. Recently Encore, recently an Encore underground power line was installed at the rear property line of Lot 18A, which is a property that was dedicated to the town for Parkland dedication and is located at Sheldon and Abbott Lane. An amended plat is proposed because Encore installed their power line outside of the existing five-foot easement because they believed that there was a ten-foot easement in place. That is now shown on this amended plat. To be transparent, a document was filed at the county to establish a ten-foot easement by separate instrument, though it's not required to duplicate that on a plat. It's good practice to keep things as up-to-date as possible. The plat conforms to the town's subdivision regulations and PD-31 zoning regulations. P&amp;Z considered this item on May 2nd, 2019, and unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval. I'm available, and the applicant is available as well.
All right, anyone wish to make a motion? Philip, you want to make a comment?
I'll make a motion to approve case AP-18, is that 18, 19-002? I guess I should put my glasses on.
Nineteen. And we have a second.
Looks like eighteen.
All right, moved by Shoffner, seconded by Jensen. Comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, Lisa sort of brought it up, but I want to, I want to put it on the record because I talked to Tommy before the meeting, just in case somebody from the mud is watching and saying, well, why aren't you, you charged us, you know? Why aren't you charging Encore? Well, they already had the ten-foot easement. We just didn't have it on the plat. And so you explained that. We're just making that straight, correct?
Yeah, it's just a scripener's error.
Okay. Just wanted to set the record.
All right, any other discussion?
Straight.
All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, it is approved. Item 10, case AP-1901. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request for approval of amended plat to Trophy Club Section 11, Lot 1365R-1 and 1366R, located south of Meadowbrook Lane and approximately 180 feet west of Rockwood Drive. And Ms. Payne?
All right, the purpose of this item is to consider approval for an amended plat on Meadowbrook Lane. The strategic link is infrastructure and development to foster a business-friendly environment. Last year, P&amp;Z and Council approved an amended plat to move the common lot line of Lots 1364R and 1365R by five feet. That was to increase the, increase the width of Lot 1365R. The applicant has now acquired Lot 1366 and would like to move its common lot line with 1365R ten feet to the west to once again increase the size of Lot 1365R. The R-10 zoning regulations are not compromised by this proposal as the widths of both of the lots comply with the eighty-foot minimum requirement, and the relocated side lot line or side setback does not interfere with the existing house on Lot 1366. The, a ten-foot drainage easement and utility, or drainage and utility easement is centered on the side lot line that is proposed for relocation as required by plat. As a result, the applicant obtained the signatures from all the necessary utility companies and as they signify that the current easement is empty and there are no problems with the, with relocating that utility easement. The plat conforms to the town's subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations. P&amp;Z considered this as well on May 2nd, and unanimously recommended approval. So I am available for questions, and staff recommends approval.
I'll recognize Councilmember Shoffner.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve case AP-19-01.
Do I have a second? Moved by Shoffner, seconded by Bone. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the, I will say this, that if I ever need anything done, I'm gonna, who is it, Roland, Ms. Parnell? Yeah, Mr. Parnell. I'm gonna hire him because he's very methodical. Five feet this way, ten feet this way. He's at it fifteen feet, and very, very smart. So that's my comment.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing no one wishing to speak, call with vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Item 11, consider and take appropriate action regarding ordinance authorizing a 1% residential homestead, providing property tax relief to Trophy Club homeowners, and providing an effective date. This is ordinance 2019-14. John, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is to approve a 1% residential homestead exemption, providing property tax leave to Trophy Club residents. Our strategic link with this is exercising fiscal discipline in all town operations. The residential homestead exemption is, would grant residents a 1% exemption or $5,000, whichever is greater. So if a resident's home value is under four, is under $500,000, they would automatically receive a $5,000 exemption. That's the best way to state that. Residents who have a home value greater than $500,000 will receive the 1% exemption. And so this exemption is eligible for 3,500 households between Ditten and Tarrant County right now. They will not need to reapply for a homestead exemption if they are already receiving a homestead exemption through the county, any of it they live in. This residential homestead exemption will impact revenue next fiscal year by $90,000. Existing growth and new growth are such that we can absorb this cost increase is with that strong growth. I'm looking, this item went in front of the Council Finance Subcommittee on May 16th, and they recommended the adoption of the 1% residential homestead exemption. Mayor Council, if you have any questions?
So I'll recognize Eric Jensen.
I want to thank you, John, for your work.
Thank you, sir.
And with that said, motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second?
Yes, I had a quick question.
I'm gonna get, I'll get to you. I'll get to you. I realize Shoffner really should have probably hit the button to give a second, but he didn't say it.
I didn't know that rule. New rule.
Okay, moving on. Okay, so Jensen made the motion, and it was seconded by Shoffner. So I will recognize Mr. Bone.
I just wanted you to repeat something. Did you say that if you already have a homestead exemption with the county and the school district, you don't have to apply? Or do they have to send something else in to get?
You're correct, they will not have to apply. Automatically applied when we filed this with the county. Both counties.
All right, any other questions or discussions about any of this? The, the options, I've had a few questions, people calling me or emailing me about it. So just to kind of make a statement about it. To help our residents in the property tax situation we find ourselves in, where property values are escalating very rapidly and trying to balance what the town can do effectively with its rate and budget, our options are lower our tax rate, which we've done for the last seven years, or proceed down this way of an exemption. So felt like that the exemption, which was being done by a number of municipalities around the state and surely locally, was maybe a good thing to do for our residents as opposed to just looking at adjusting the tax rate. We were up against a deadline to get this done if we were gonna have it in the next year, and I think the deadline was somewhere in June, is that right?
June 30th, yes, sir.
June 30th. So, so that's the reason it has come before us at this particular time. I have really had no negative comment from anybody other than questions about how does that affect us? Why didn't you lower the tax rate? Why don't you kind of explain it and show the calculation? That's kind of where I was. So I'm in favor of doing that. I think it's a good thing to do. It is not something that can be removed easily, and maybe not at all. It would depend if the state constitution changes, which could happen, but probably unlikely given so many places that have done this. So I just want to make sure everybody had a chance to understand what was happening, pros and cons to that, and let council speak if they wish to do so, or ask questions. Anybody on council have a comment or questions?
Yeah, and I think that we, we discussed this in our Council Finance Subcommittee. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great benefit to those who choose to live here as, and make their home in Trophy Club their homestead. Not so much for somebody who has rental property or commercial property or things like that, but those, and I guess, John, it's 3,500 households is what, what you said, out of how many? Forty-one hundred, maybe?
Forty-four, forty-six.
Forty-four, yeah, okay. So- Exactly. Yeah, exactly. So, so it's a benefit to those who actually settle down and, and make their home here.
All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2019-14, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous to approve. John, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Item number 12. Discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration on the June 11th council meeting and for the future agenda list. So, Council, you will find the June 11th meeting on page 177 of your packet. It's an outline of what we see at this point. Does anybody have something that they want to comment on this page or add to this page or see about delaying? Anybody? Yes?
Just hold off for a second, go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we don't really approve this, so if you have a question about this, you can just go ahead and ask it, Michael.
I'll wait till the next item, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay, my mistake.
Okay. All right, so nobody else has anything about this date? So what about pages 178, 179, which is future agenda list? I would bring out that item number six can be removed, which is old town development-related matters. We don't vote on it. Oh, well, you're right. Right, we, we will vote on it eventually, but, okay.
That's true, you can take it off whenever you want.
Okay. I, I'm anticipating that we'll move forward, so for right now, remove six. All right, anybody else have something about these items? Michael?
Yeah, for the future items.
Right.
I would like for the interim town manager to prioritize an investigation for use of turf fields at Independence Park for cost-benefit ratio analysis on extending the useful life of those fields and additional applications.
Say that one more time.
I would like for the interim town manager just to, if you would, just prioritize it. It doesn't have to be critical. The use of converting the existing grass fields to turf and do a cost-benefit ratio analysis as far as like deferred maintenance, additional use, additional income that could come in from it.
And I, I would support that. And I would like to, can I add something to the, that we, that we also get with the Baseball Association and try to do what I've been preaching for, seems like an eternity now? You know, a payback type program?
All right, so, Michael, are you okay with adding the, getting with the Baseball Association to your item?
Absolutely.
Well, if he doesn't, I'm not gonna support it.
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent, just, there's, there's a lot of towns making, making money off of the use of that expense that was going to our town residents right now. Is it worth it, or is it not? So that's what I'd like to look at.
Absolutely.
Staff, any questions of what he's asking for?
No, sir.
All right, anybody else have something to add to future agenda list? All right. Can we remove item four? I'm okay with removing it. There's challenges in the state laws dealing with that, and nothing really has changed. If something proceeds, we could re-add it. So any, any objection to removing four? All right? All right, thank you. Eric? All right. That takes care of item number 12. So in just a few minutes, we will convene into executive session. I need to read a few things, and then we will adjourn to the side conference room. Item 13, pursuant to the following designated section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Meeting Act, the council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, deliberation regarding real property. Item, which has two items. Item one, North State Highway 114, east of Trophy Club Drive and west of Town Limits. And item two, North State Highway 114, west of Trophy Club Drive. Then item B, Section 551-074, personnel matters in the subsection one, to discuss or deliberate the appointment evaluation and duties of a public officer or employee. And that includes a number of items. Item one, Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Two, Economic Development Corporation 4B. Three, Park and Recreation Board. Four, Town Council Appointments Committee. Five, Charter Review Commission. And six, Town Manager Position. And then item C, 551-087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under subsection one, to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near a territory of the governmental body and which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations, and such as to deliberate the offer or financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the town seeks to have locate within the town. Item one is agreements, OTD. It is 7:49, we are in closed session. Come back. It is 8:06 PM, and council will reconvene into regular session just to deal with item number C, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So at this time, I would entertain a motion from Councilmember Bone.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both economic development agreements regarding tract one, lots one and two, and tract two-
tract one, lots one and two, and tract two, lot two. And I'd also like to include the option to make a, for EDC to make a lump sum payment.
Second, the option's already there.
All right, and so we have a motion by Councilmember Bone, a second by Jensen. Just to update all the citizens about this, taking the option in the agreement to pay off the loan would save EDC and the town and its citizens $194,622.43 overall in interest. Currently, what that would do to our EDC fund balance would leave it still with $33,659 in the fund balance, with an anticipated increase next year in how much we're getting annually. In addition to that, we would no longer be required to make the $140,000 a year payment that we have been making. So, you're saving the interest, citizens, you're going to increase your fund balance at EDC, because you're not making that payment. So, that's the reason that we're going ahead and exercising this option. Any questions anybody has? All right, call for the vote. All those in favor of approving, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. It is 8:08, and we are going to reconvene in executive session. We will reconvene into regular session, it is 9:28 PM. Item 13, pursuant to the following designated section of Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, we're going to convene into executive session to discuss the following, 551-072, deliberation regarding real property to discuss or deliberate purchase exchange.
Sure. We're in 14.
Number 14.
Oh, no, that...
13 was going into executive, we're on 14 now.
Item 15?
Yeah. We gotta do 14?
Yeah.
14.
Oh, we did 14, my bad, 15?
We did 14.
Do we not have?
Well, we have an item dealing with 13A2.
Yes.
So...
Yep. Oh, that's going to be 19, is what you're talking about.
Well, you could do it, but when we reconvene, you're, okay, reconvene, we'll deal it with 19, right, I'm sorry. Okay, thanks. So, 19 will deal with the 13A2. All right. All right, so thank you. All right, so we have dealt with item 14 previously. Item 15, consider take appropriate action regarding making appointments to the Town Council Appointments Committee, and our Appointments Committee consisted of Jensen, Kurtz, and Sanders, and I would recognize Michael Garossi for a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to appoint Sanders, Jensen, and Shoffner to serve on the Town Council Appointments Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Garossi, seconded by Bone. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, is approved. Item 16, consider take appropriate action repealing Resolution 2018-17, and adopting a new resolution appointing the council, a council member to serve as the council liaison as the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, reaffirming existing appointments and chairperson, and providing an effective date. That's Resolution 2019-11. The council decided that we don't need to name a liaison, but do we need to change 2019-11 to eliminate the liaison? So, that's a question for staff.
Motion to reaffirm existing appointments and chairperson without a council liaison.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Jensen, a second by Shoffner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Item 17, consider take appropriate action repealing Resolution 2019-02, and adopting a new resolution adopting a council member to serve as the council liaison to the EDC 4B, reaffirming existing appointments and providing an effective date. That's Resolution 2019-12. I'd recognize Sean Bone for a motion.
You're recognizing me?
Oh.
And...
Oh, I see. All right, sure.
No problem. Make a motion to repeal Resolution 2019-02, and approve Resolution 2019-12, appointing Sean Bone to serve as the council liaison to the EDC 4B, reaffirming existing appointments, effective date as today, May 28, 2019.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is done. Item 18, consider take appropriate action repealing Resolution 2018-21, and adopting a new resolution adopting a council member to serve as the council liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, reaffirming existing appointments and chairperson, and providing an effective date. Resolution 2019-13, would recognize Alicia Fleury for a motion.
I move to repeal Resolution 2018-21, and approve Resolution number 2019-13, appointing Michael Garossi to serve as the council liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, reaffirming existing appointments and chairperson, and providing an effective date of May 28, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Shoffner. A thank.
Yeah.
So, moved by Alicia Fleury, seconded by Shoffner. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous, is approved. Item 19, consider take appropriate action regarding executive session, and so, I think I am recognizing Alicia, Alicia for a motion.
I move to direct staff to work on incentive package with Meet You Anywhere BBQ for the mutual access easement across the property of Meet You Anywhere, providing access to and from neighboring businesses as discussed in executive session.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Just as point of information for everyone, the staff has been doing some investigation of the access road that runs in front of Meet You Anywhere. Why did it fail? How much would it cost to repair it? And what are the aspects of that? The motion is asking staff to move forward with what we have in, on the plat, the original aspect of that area that was developed, which was something called a mutual access...
Covenant?
Covenant, that exists in the property. And so, it's directing staff to go work with Meet You Anywhere, who is the property owner, and deal with the issue of getting the road open and repaired as soon as possible. And we'll have more information back from staff to deal with that issue. Council, anybody have any questions about that, or anything you think should be shared? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, no one opposed, it is unanimous. Does anybody else have any other business dealing with 19? Hearing none, it's 9:34.